I took ahead a call to me into order, and for all those who can't, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Escal, we listen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brittany Carroco.
How are you doing?
Yeah.
Marka, uh, Mark Strach?
Here.
Yeah, that's us.
Here.
Tom, the way.
Here.
Sharon, from Denver.
Here.
The town.
Here.
Great, thank you, Brittany. Minutes for April 24th, 2023, if I got a motion.
Uh, so moved.
So a second.
Thank you.
The motion is seconded, discussion for approval of the minutes of April 24th, 2023. Here are no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Public address to the board, this is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following, please identify yourself by name, address, and all the company institution you represent. Public address to the board segment will last no longer than thirty minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair of the destiny may answer questions on procedural matters, please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make their request at this time, the board chair may grant this request. Again, address comments to the board chair and be concise. We are meeting in person, making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we'll not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you'd like to be sure to participate, please attend in person. Anybody looking to address the board? Yes, sir.
Yes.
Just your name and address and then topic, yep?
Peter Gordon, 300 Paul Road, Dalton, topic is the RFP.
Okay.
Okay. I own the four acres that are involved in the RFP. I also own twenty acres that are located here on the north side.
Okay, come on up here so we can, um, yeah, yeah, let me get a cheer and you can sit right there in front of the mics. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I own the, uh, four acres. And there's also twenty acres that are located on the north side of the RFP. Right now. The, um... What I'm after here today, and I've been seeking in the past, and hopefully with a public forum, I'll get somewhere, some dialogue. This has been going on for years, and nobody's talked to me. Seems like that the point we're at now, someone should be talking to me. See what I, what I'm feeling, am I gonna sell, am I not gonna sell? You need this land to go with your land. And there's been no dialogue between, you know, I mean, I've been in the town hall twice, asked for, for some confirmation on some rights away. Never got back to me. So, we need dialogue, we need cooperation. The board, town, and I, we need to cooperate to get this matter done. I wanna see this done as much as you guys do, probably more. I really wanna get this done, but without the dialogue, without cooperation, we're going nowhere, gentlemen. Nope. So... I went to the town hall the other day on another matter, and I told Alyssa, and she informed me that there was a RFP. Nobody told me. I had to find out basically on the street that there was a RFP. Seems like that means something that I should know about, you should have told me. Someone should have told me, I shouldn't have to go out and just find out. So, found out about the RFP. So... We have two things in common up there. In addition to the, uh, the two lands that need to get together. I've gotten phone calls from MDR, sure you have too? MDR is very explicit, cannot be sold unless they're put together. I was told, point land, cannot sell land unless it goes together. You cannot sell land unless it goes together, they will not approve it. So, we know, we both know that. Um, we both have landlocked land up there. This is outside of the RFP. This is nine acres the town owns up there, and the twenty acres that I own. Both are landlocked. You have, in the RFP, you have shown where there is and described a right of way, very explicitly. It's gonna be paved, you named the street, which I don't understand. You named the street North Mountain Road, we have two North Mountain Roads now. Maybe you're gonna connect the two, I don't know, but that could be what you, what you plan this way. Two North Mountain Roads. So, you have taken care of your landlocked land, but in the invitation to the RFP, I did see that, that, uh, it actually shows in the invitation, there is a, uh, right of way up to my land. It's shown in the invitation, it's shown on all the maps, but you're not describing it in the RFP. This is, this, you know, if it had to go to Land Corps and be slammed down for the, for the landowner up there, that always goes to landowners, you ask to go that far. You shouldn't go that far, you should be able to agree on this. You own the land, all you gotta do is put it in there. John said the other day, you own the land, can do whatever we want. So, you can put it in there, and that would be, that would solve the issue. I mean, what I proposing is, you go ahead and you name that street, run that street all the way to my land, call the whole thing North Mountain Road, I don't care. But it's on the land, it's on the maps, it exists, and I gotta sneak a suspicion why you don't want it to go through, through there, but I won't go into that. So... No, I think that pretty much covers it, that's all I'm all to say.
Right. Thank you. Appreciate your attention. Yep, we can, um, certainly, if you're interested, I think it's maybe schedule a time with the town manager and myself and our vice chair, we can talk through the history of this. Cause it's been a long history process, as you probably are aware.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a quick question?
Goodness, boy.
Is the right of way from the town-owned land, town has a right of way off of Route 9 to our land. And then you're claiming that there's a right of way from that land north to your twenty acres, right?
You are, you are, I signed off on, you and Bob were both on the board, you signed off on years.
Okay. Does that show up on the deed?
That I don't know.
Well, well, if the person buys it, it's on the deed, they have to abide by it. I mean, that's the answer to the whole question.
You're the town, you can put it in there, otherwise.
Well, if it's on the deed, we don't have to do anything.
But if it's not on the deed, you can put it on there.
Well, I think you should come here and prepare it, I mean, I don't wanna try to be a pain in the ass here, but...
We're not gonna, we're not gonna debate it this evening, cause it's not officially on the agenda, so we can't debate. I'm happy to, with, with the motion from the board to put on a future agenda, but I'm offering today, it's just a conversation to bring you up to, up to date in what the town has done, and the legal steps we've taken with MDR and our town attorneys to where we are now with the RFP. Uh, we've been through this now for at least five years, maybe, since I've been on the board.
Yeah.
And we finally came to a conclusion, um, with our legal, so be happy to bring you up to speed on that. Um, and then if we wanna have another discussion with the board, we certainly can, but I think officially, we're at the RFP stage, and we can't bring that back. So we've already kind of moved, moved in that direction.
Okay, just, again, I'm here for dialogue, and I can just move in the wrong direction, I'm out, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else to address the board? Yes, sir.
Uh, Richard Hall, 1600.
Come on up, Richard, so we can hear you from the mics, yep?
Well, it was, if I could be recognized, uh, number seven.
Number seven, absolutely, yep.
Well, and there is one question I have. On the discussion of possible solar array, that has to go out to RFP, is my understanding. So is it appropriate for it to be discussed at this stage, or if they want the RFP? I didn't even know there's.
No, I think it's just informational update from Citizens Energy Today, it's not, not anything else but that.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
I think it specifically, Mr. Hall, was, um, I think there was a question from our green committee representatives about possibly leveraging some of that solar array energy for local businesses. I think there was an open question for that. Yep? Anybody else to address the board? Okay, see, um, um, number six, appointment of Lee Nunez as assessor, effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. Mr. Hutchinson.
Yes, I'm very pleased, uh, Mr. Nunez is here today, and, uh, he has been the assessor's clerk for some time now, and has been taking, uh, the, uh, education, he's been getting the education he needs, according to Massachusetts state law, to be named as an assessor. Um, he's done that, and, uh, he's being recommended by the principal assessor as making up, um, our full complement of three assessors, and I'll tell you, we very much appreciate that, and we very much need somebody. And who knows, we may need somebody else in the next few years as well, but by that time, we will have mastered all the aspects of assessing, right? I don't know if you wanna say a few words about your experience here, or?
Come on up to the mics, all the way up, yep?
I just wanna say that I look forward to progressing in the assessor's department, I've learned a lot, and I really enjoy it.
Great.
So, I'm privileged to be with an assessor.
Awesome, thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
And with that, is there a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Lee Nunez as town assessor, effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is seconded, any discussion? Here are none, all in favor? Oh, Mr. Boyle.
Yeah, I just wanna say, that Mr. Nunez's professionalism and articulateness and attention to detail found an error this spring in my tax building. There's a, uh, power to be billed one piece of property when you building, you bought, and got another piece of property, and, uh, he called me in and explained it to me, and straightened the whole mess out expeditiously. And I think he used just a, uh, starting position as a clerk there.
Great.
In February.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Great, great work. Any further discussion? We have a motion, a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congrats, Lee.
Well, congratulations.
Um, just a little homework on the agenda real quick, if I may, um, and this was after talking to town council and some brief conversation before the meeting, this is in good faith, that we're gonna move number nine to town manager evaluation, number 10, consideration of attention, to extend Tom Andrew's contract to executive session. Uh, that would be under the exemption of to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Uh, exemption number two, there's no objection, I like to move that to executive session at the end. And then we'll take a formal vote on movement to executive session. Any objections?
No objections.
Here are none. And then also for executive session, we're going to add a, an issue that came up late last week to the board's attention, and, um, that'll be to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or, uh, to consider filing criminal complaint of a check fraud issue. So we're gonna get an update from our town manager and dive into that in detail. And we will come back out of executive session at the end to report out in open session. So that's just some agenda maintenance here. Uh, number seven, Citizens Energy Corporation presentation, Emily, is she ready?
I am.
All right, Emily, the floor is yours, this is, um, uh, let's see, Emily's going to present from the Citizens Energy Corporation. We got a town resident participation in solar energy credits from Warren Farms Project. And then this is discussion of a possible solar array at Old Town landfill, so...
Thank you, board, for the opportunity, thank, um, I have a couple slides that I'll pull up.
Can you hear it?
I'm not fully sure if you're gonna be visible to you as well.
Yeah, we got a big screen here, Emily, so we're okay, yep?
Oh, great, okay, wonderful. Let me share, or have Sharon screen.
Yeah, we're not all turning our backs on you, we're actually looking at the screen behind us.
Okay, no problem. Uh, let me just share my presentation.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarity, uh, this is the presentation from Citizens Energy, relative to the potential to purchase power from the existing solar array that's been installed, and we'll go, come online, um, soon, right? This is not the discussion about our own possible solar array, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great, um, I'm Emily Byrne with Citizens Energy. Um, we are developing the Warren Farms landfill, which is, to clarify, the privately owned landfill that's adjacent to the town-owned landfill at the end of Bridle Street, uh, Bridle Road. We have been developing that for several years, uh, and we are, um, just going to begin financing activities and begin foot-in preparation here in the next couple months to get that project under construction. We are excited about this project because it is, uh, been a long time coming, um, and we are, the project size is, um, three and a half megawatts DC. And that means that we're able to offer the town, um, of Dalton an opportunity to purchase discounted energy credits generated by that facility, um, to help, uh, reduce their electric, uh, bills. So I'll talk about that proposal to the town, I'll touch on Citizens Joe for Sun program, which is our low-income community shared solar program. And I know that it was just a discussion topic from, uh, the town manager over to us, as we've been trying to encourage the town to go out to bid for the town's project, or a town, excuse me, a town's project at the town landfill, so to everybody's, um, comments, I think I, I caught a couple of comments about how they have to out the RFP, and that was basically what I was going to say, I'd love to see the town, um, put together a request for proposals for their project, for a project, um, on their town-owned landfill. Uh, it could be a great little project, um, and that's as much as we can say, because it needs to go through public procurement. So with that, I will, um, present the proposal that we have here, um, for, basically it's called an alternative on-bill credit agreement, uh, under the SMART program, the SMART solar program in Massachusetts. It's very similar to a net, net metering, um, agreement, if that's maybe a term you're more familiar with, it's just a different, um, name because it's under the SMART program. We'd offer the town a fifteen percent fixed discount on the value of the credits that they receive, and there's no floor. The value of the credits that you would receive is equal to the basic service rate by ever-source. So that rate fluctuates, it goes, it rises and it falls. Um, and so with a fifteen percent fixed discount, there would be no possible way the town would ever pay more for the credits that they would receive, because the discount would be off the value of energy wherever that price may have risen or fallen. Um, it would be for a twenty-year term. And the contract, the citizens has proposed a contract amount for the town of two hundred and fifteen thousand kilowatt-hours. Um, and that number was reached by working with the town or town offices, um, to receive the town's annual kilowatt-hour usage over the last three years, um, between 2020 and 2022. And we basically averaged the total usage, um, of the town, and took about eighty percent of that, um, average, which gave us about two hundred and fifteen thousand kilowatt-hours. That is to ensure that the town would not purchase more power than they would ever use, um, so you're not going to find yourself in a position where suddenly you're buying credits that you're not able to use. That's why it's an eighty percent, not a hundred percent, for example, of the town's usage. Um, you know, I'm happy to have further discussions with the town, uh, if there's a different approach to, in terms of the value or the, the quantity of kilowatt-hours that they would like to purchase from Citizens Project. For reference, the project will produce two and a half million kilowatt-hours that we'll be looking to go out to contract with, um, uh, commercial industrial, um, off-takers. So there's plenty more power from this project for purchase, uh, if the town has other needs, um, or is so inclined.
Uh, there's a question from our town manager.
Yeah, hello, Emily. Is that, uh, two hundred and fifteen kilowatt-hours per year?
Correct, I'm sorry, this is an annual, yeah, sorry, I should've put that in.
And, yes, okay, thank you.
Yes, it would be a two hundred and fifteen thousand kilowatt-hours per year contract. Um, and in year one, the savings would show approximately seventy-two hundred dollars, that's using the current ever-source rate. Um, and actually you can jump to the next page, which is probably gonna make people's eyes spin, but don't get overwhelmed, this is just, um, showing like basically the twenty-year contract, year over year. And I can quickly walk you through, uh, what, what we're showing here. The contract value, um, is two hundred and fifteen thousand in year one. The AOBC rate, um, is the, is basically the term alternative on-bill credit rate, and that is the basic service rate, um, by ever-source. And right now, that is twenty-two point five cents. So if you're at two hundred and fifteen thousand kilowatt-hours multiplied by twenty-two and a half cents, your total credits that the town would receive on their electric bills, because the credits come in a dollar monetary format, be forty-eight thousand dollars. We would offer a fifteen percent discount, so citizens would then be owed by the town forty-one thousand, or a savings of seven thousand.
Emily, if I...
And so this model here just assumes a two percent escalator in the, in the, uh, basic service or alternative on-bill credit rate here, over twenty years. Um, and that's why the dammers are changing, um, but whatever that credit rate is, is the rate that the town would be receiving value based on. So this is just a novel forecast.
And Emily, is that...
So you can see.
Emily, your, Citizens is projecting to generate three point five million? Is that what you said?
So this is, is projecting to actually, um, this project is a three point five megawatt DC project, projected about five million kilowatt-hours. This project is a low-income community shared solar project, which I should have probably mentioned earlier, but I was gonna talk about, um, citizens' low-income component to this project in just a minute.
Okay.
But I can explain that, um, now.
Yeah, like, well, at some point, I'd like to...
So...
I would like to understand the total, the total impact value to the town Dalton, not only our own statements, but our residents as well. It's something like the full picture.
Um, the, this would be, so, so the low-income community shared solar model requires fifty percent of the benefit, energy uptake, to be contracted to low-income eligible ratepayers.
In, in Dalton?
Which would be...
In western Massachusetts?
We could, we would look to be contracted with local residents in the town of Dalton, basically they need an R2 or an R4.
Yeah.
Um, rate class on their bill. And then they could participate directly in our program. And that program, um, for fifty percent, um, of the power, we would be able to serve approximately five hundred and fifty, um, households.
So...
So we would look to serve five hundred and fifty households in Dalton, and also contract with the town for an alternative on-bill credit agreement for two hundred and fifteen thousand kilowatt-hours.
Okay, thank you, one, one point, um, we do have, uh, an electricity aggregation, uh, program here in town, and, uh, the rate for the next two years, uh, starting in January, is gonna be about thirteen cents per kilowatt-hour. Um, obviously, we don't know where it's going in the future, and no one knows where ever-source's basic rate is going either. I understand those are, those are, um, calculations, but right now, about two-thirds of the residents are part of the aggregation program. In case that makes a difference to your calculations.
No, um, the town, uh, receives, uh, ever-source energy, uh, ever-source bill, correct? Despite the fact that you have a, a, a competitive electric supplier, right?
Sure.
So as long as the town's receiving a bill from ever-source, these, that, these monetary credits can be applied to the account. And they will still approve, despite your rate of thirteen cents, they will approve at ever-source's basic service rate.
That's very good news.
Yeah, okay.
It is good news. So it won't affect anything to do with your, um, competitive electric situation. This is just kind of a separate deal that you're able to utilize, um, in addition to your, um, contracted rate through the competitive energy supplier.
Emily, is it be for twenty years, the length of the contract?
Correct.
Length of the project? Thank you.
I'm sorry, were you questioning if it was living for twenty years?
Yeah.
Yes, so we look to contract for twenty years and probably have options to extend, which would be very similar to the, uh, lease agreement with the town, with the private landowner. So that as long as the project is producing energy, there's an opportunity for the town to have.
If at that point in time, you renew the lease or extend the lease, do these programs give extended?
The lease is with a private landowner, so we'll have to negotiate with them, but I believe, and don't quote me, but I believe we have several options to extend, uh, within the lease, so that while twenty years is the initial term, there are renewal terms, if you will, that's what they're called. So it could go, uh, I believe it's up to thirty years. But at that time, there would need to be a renegotiation with the private landowner, um, to further base the production for the project, to keep the project going.
Yeah, from a tax base, Tom, we were receiving the taxes overdue, payments of those taxes, which was like two hundred something thousand dollars, if I remember correctly. Right?
Yes, the, the back taxes.
The back taxes.
Yes, yes, that...
And then going forward, that we'll be getting tax revenue from that land again, because now it's being leased.
Yes, um, I don't know, Emily, if you can speak to your understanding of the landowner's, uh, agreement to pay taxes going forward, or, or your assumption of that?
Sure, um, before we are able to receive a building permit from the town of Dalton per our special permit, um, we will be required to, excuse me. We'll be required to pay the back taxes in full, but that will take care of outstanding payments. Um, and then moving forward, um, Citizens is looking to put a payment in lieu of taxes agreement in place with the town that will cover the personal property and the tax base for the landfill, and that will be paid by Citizens moving forward.
Hey, just to go one step further with this, does this mean that the Warren family, the owners of the property, will be contributing nothing to this process either now, when the back taxes are paid, or in the future, as we go forward? They will be making no direct payments to the town?
Who, I'm sorry, what, what was, could you repeat the question for me?
As we move forward, uh, Citizens Energy is going to pay the back taxes, probably only three hundred thousand. Okay, you see that?
With fees.
With fees, and all, the whole ball away, okay? And moving forward, Citizens Energy in lieu of taxes is going to make a payment to the town of Dalton. Correct?
Both personal property taxes and the land taxes.
Real, real quick, just, just for audio, the speaker is over there, it's on the front there and not the back, so just as we're speaking, make sure to turn to the front.
Yes, sir. Did you hear my question?
Citizens will be paying personal and real property taxes moving forward.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, in lieu of taxes, the Warren family or the heirs of the Warren family will be paying nothing to the town of Dalton, no direct payments to the town of Dalton.
Uh, I can only speak to what Citizens is in a position to pay, and that would, that would be the taxes for the personal property, um...
All right, thank you.
For this solar property.
The Warren family receives the value of the leased property from Citizens Energy, they get payments from Citizens for the lease, but Citizens will pay the taxes.
Right.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Tom, is anybody going, in town management, can we ask that somebody puts together a financial pro forma on this, or what we're actually looking at? I'm hearing a lot of numbers, I don't know what the total impact is for the town.
Right, well, this is the first time we've heard the numbers too, so I'll, I'll work with Emily on that.
No, I don't want Emily, I want internal, I, I don't want to vent, I don't want Citizens to know what the value is, I want our own team evaluating the values, my proposal.
Oh, well, we'll be negotiating the pilot, if, if that's what...
No, the full package, the full, what's the, what's the energy savings to us, what, over twenty years?
Yeah.
What's the, what's the taxes, what's the, what's the payoff of the back taxes, so we get a big chunk of three hundred thousand, what is the total financial picture for the town?
Sure.
Anybody disagree with that? I just, I just, I don't understand it.
I don't disagree.
I don't disagree, but we've all gotta work together here, that's what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
And he, and Todd, I'll usually ask to work with Emily to get some information about the financial...
Yeah, you get the information, but the actual...
Pro forma.
The pro forma internally, because we've already has, we've already had previously a concern where we had a third party do a contract on our behalf without access, so that, I raised that concern. I mean, I wanna make sure that our independent team does evaluation, owns the execution of that pro forma, and gets a value. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. Sorry, Emily, I cut you off, but go ahead.
No, that's fine, and I believe, um, you should also... No, that's fine, and I believe, um, you should also have received a copy of what I think I termed a, a term sheet for the alternative on bill credit agreement. I believe I sent it over to Alyssa, is that, does that sound familiar?
Yep.
Yeah, they got it.
And I think that that should give you a really good, high level understanding when you go back to it, because I know I threw a lot of numbers at you here. It is not an overly complex, um, offer to the town, but it is enough numbers that it's a little bit, it'll make your head spin. So I apologize if I didn't present this in a very readily digestible format, there's a lot of nuances and components to it all. But the term sheet should break it down for you. Um, and the contract value of how many kilowatt hours the town would contract with Citizens for produced by the solar array, I think it's the biggest, um, piece that the town will wanna look at, because I think that that could, um, bring the, the big benefit to you to make sure you are purchasing the correct amount of power. Um, based on the numbers, I do feel confident in the two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, but, um, you know, this is a contract that it is twenty years, so I, I would just, um.
This, and this is the first pass of the contract, so I guess question to Tom Manager, have we sent a, um, a counter proposal on the discount rate? Or are we just accepting the fifteen percent fixed?
Um, no, well, we, we just got this recently too, so we haven't said it since any, any, any of that. We are in, uh, preliminary negotiations about the pilot. But, you know, it, it's, it's been essentially one back and forth.
Yeah, I think that fifteen percent is low in my opinion, but, okay. Any questions on the board? Any thoughts?
Please defer to Richard Hall for good for a moment.
Can Richard be part of this negotiation thing?
Sure, Mr. Hall, if you don't mind, you wanna come up and you want, he had a few questions anyway, so come on up to the, to the hot seat.
Hi, Emily.
Hi.
Uh, so, at, at the moment, the town has a contract with Cal Power for a discount. Is this gonna be able to work in conjunction with that contract?
Yes, yeah. Um, the basic service rate by ever source, um, is how the credits are calculated and it's independent of your contract. And the credits will be applied as a monetary value on the electric bill. Um, it's again, independent of the rate that you have contract.
Yeah, but what we're saying is, we have, we already have an agreement like this in place with another, um, producer of power. So can you have two on the same, same bill, so to speak?
Um, you have a, an alternative on bill credit agreement?
Correct.
With another entity?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, there's no reason that you can't have multiple, many of our optakers have multiple contracts, net metering contracts or alternative on bill credit contracts.
Okay, great. So, so as, I think, we're gonna, you know, do some things internally to chat about it. But, so, going to the, um, homeowner who's, uh, low income, how exactly does that work? So, say, say I have a, I'm a homeowner with a low income bill. How do I sign up for this? Are we gonna do education? Are we gonna do a presentation?
Sure, I can jump to that.
Yeah.
That right now, um, Citizens has a, one of the four, the largest low income community shared solar program in Massachusetts right now. We have six projects in Massachusetts serving over two thousand subscribers. Uh, that's more than twenty megawatts of power that's being produced. Uh, we have provided more than, uh, one and a half million dollars of savings to, um, low income households through our program. Again, Warren Farms landfill is being developed as a low income community shared solar project. And based on the production of energy, we're, we are calculating that we can serve approximately five hundred and fifty eligible customers. That would give them an annual savings of about three hundred to four hundred dollars a year. Citizens has an entire team dedicated in-house to, um, running our Joe for Sun low income program. Just for some context, I sit on the Citizens Enterprises side of Citizens Energy. Energy, Citizens Energy is the non-for-profit parent company. Citizens Enterprises does for-profit business ventures to help fund the charitable activity. So our team, our Joe for Sun team, will become involved, like, become very involved later this year when we're a little bit closer to, um, understanding our construction schedule and when we will be in operation. Because you don't wanna sign up subscribers too far in advance when they're gonna be sitting around wondering where their benefits are. Um, so, our team will be, um, looking to engage with the town of Dalton directly, um, and different boards and agencies. They meet with different, they meet with cap agencies, local, um, shelters, all of the, um, we've done a lot of outreach for all of our existing projects that are operating. And we'll perform the same outreach activities, um, here in Dalton to encourage all local Dalton residents to sign up first. Um, and I will bring, I would point and suggest tonight that later this year, when we're ready to start our marketing and outreach campaign, which will go over in much detail how people can sign up, um, who can sign up, how you're eligible, what you need to do. Um, you know, I would bring, uh, we would try to maybe get on the select boards agenda and I could bring my colleague, who is the program director for Joe for Sun, and she would answer all of your questions very specifically about the low income component, um, to this project.
Emily, another question, this is Joe again, um, of the, I forget the number you mentioned, five million, five million or three and a half million?
Five million kilowatt hours of energy produced.
Per year?
Per year.
And we are.
Fifty percent of that will be contracted to an anchor, fifty to low income, fifty percent.
Fifty percent to an anchor?
If an anchor customer, like the town of Dalton, will be a portion of that contract.
Okay, and fifty percent to low income?
Correct.
Of the five million?
Correct.
That stays local?
If we can sign up five hundred and fifty households, we anticipate being able to utilize the two hundred, two point five million kilowatt hours produced.
Two, you just, is it two point five or five million?
Five million kilowatt hours total.
Yeah.
Low income is half of that.
Yep, okay.
So two and a half million credits, kilowatt hours, will be distributed to five hundred and fifty households.
In Dalton?
If we could get like all Dalton residents to sign up, that would be great, yep. You'd be surprised, it's difficult to get people to sign up, but that's why we're, we're very, um, we have to start an early campaign, um, to make sure people are aware of what's happening and what the opportunities are.
Yeah, I'm trying, what I'm trying to get to is that this energy's not going east. It stays local in Berkshire County. Can you commit to that?
Um, we will look to subscribe the project with as many local Dalton residents as possible, for sure.
I don't think you're gonna get five hundred and fifty Dalton residents to sign up, this is my point, it, let's say you get two hundred. But, Richard, do you see where I'm going?
Yeah, so, so Emily, uh, the credits that are created by this project are only available in the western Mass, uh, region, because they can't jump into the eastern, uh, part.
Technically, they're actually able to be.
So you can, yeah, so you, so, so Dalton can have some of them and then other, other low income people can have them in the western part of the state or western Mass, as far as ever source goes, but they can't be offered to people in the eastern part of the state, I think that's what Joe was asking. Is that correct? My understanding.
Ever source is actually, the smart program has recently, um, shifted and allowed for credits on an ever source to cross low zones. Which I believe is your question, will low zone be western Mass or eastern Mass for ever source? So ever source, eastern Massachusetts residents, low income residents could take advantage of this project as well.
So, yeah, can't get it.
So that would be a concern. I think, I think we do this with the due for low income in our, in our county.
Well, the, I just wanna back up, the, the offer to the town of Dalton is for the alternative on bill credit agreement, um, contract for two hundred and fifteen thousand kilowatt hours. The low income component is something that Citizens will administer.
Then there has to be, there has to be more value to Dalton in the twenty-year term is what I'm saying, so either we restrict it to, to this, this county area or we increase the, the discount rate higher than fifteen percent. I want, I, I, I don't think, you know, there's value, if I look at the twenty-year term value. And I don't think we can get five hundred and fifty households in Dalton to sign up, because I haven't seen proof or evidence yet of Citizens' approach to that, what their rate of, of, of enrollment is. And then so there's a lot of unknown factors here to really figure out if we're gonna get true value for our residents, I'm, 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 no, no question we're gonna get financial value about the back taxes, but these are just, when I look at type of, these types of contracts or agreements, I'm looking at the twenty, twenty-year term value and how we, how we maximize that. Am I off, am I off base, Richard? Thinking through this?
No, I, I think, you, you know, one of the things to look at is if, on the low income, can it be marketed to, uh, there's a lot of low income, uh, bills within, uh, Berkshire County.
Right.
So that may be something to, to the team about.
Yeah.
Rather than saying, okay, we've had a rough go at this, but we're not getting many people signing up, so we're just gonna send it to the eastern part of the state.
Right, we're gonna negotiate that upfront to lock it in. Yeah.
That, that certainly isn't our, um, we would market to western Mass to local residents. I was simply stating earlier that the opportunity, you, you are able to allocate credits across low zones per the program.
Yeah, I just wanna contractually lock it in though somehow.
I have a question.
That, that could, there's nothing that we would be looking at contract with the town of Dalton regarding a low income component, um, or optake. I guess, I'm, I'm not following, um.
If you're committing five hundred and fifty residents, household is the target, what's, what is the baseline enrollment that considers a success? If we only get ten or twenty households, the, the, the main driver of this program from three or four years ago, whenever we started this, was low income energy savings, was the overall value. If we only get twenty households enrolled or a hundred households enrolled, we're not seeing the overall value except for our taxes coming back to us, which is, which is valuable, but the intent is to help out our low res, low income residents in, in energy savings.
Well, the, the other part that town's getting back is the credit for our own energy use.
We get a credit back, then we're paying out forty-one thousand, and so our savings is only seven thousand a year.
That's my issue.
That's, that's low.
I wanna tie into this, 'cause.
This is pretty, fifteen percent is actually quite standard.
Which is low.
Yeah, well, it's fifteen percent off of this twenty-two fifty-two example rate, is that today's ever source rate?
That's correct.
And our. My point is, our power purchase agreement right now, or the aggregate agreement, is, it's somewhere in the thirteen cents per kilowatt hour range. Why would we negotiate or enter into an agreement where we're paying a little over nineteen cents after the discount? I don't understand, I'm missing something. Or need someone to explain to me why we'd do that.
You wouldn't be paying anything, um, per this, the value that you would see on your bill would be a credit of forty-eight thousand dollars. And then you would owe Citizens forty-one thousand, instead of ever source, you would basically pay Citizens for forty-one thousand dollars, a fifteen percent discount. The rate is simply how you're getting the value calculated, but it doesn't have anything to do with the current rate that the town has contracted into competitive and a pleasant supply. They're, they're very, it's a separate, um, calculation entirely.
We're still paying you more for the energy and by my calculation, but I, maybe I'm missing something.
No, you would only be paying us for the credits received, which was monetary credit, and you would be paying fifteen percent discount on the value of the monetary credits received any given month.
I understand that, but if you were to break that down, that energy basis down, and actually figure out what the rate on that energy was, um, I, I feel like we're still overpaying for it, but again, maybe I'm missing something, I need more information.
We're getting fifteen percent off of a higher rate than we're paying.
That's right.
So that's more money off.
It's a benefit, yeah, it's a huge benefit to the town. The, the back that the ever source credit is valued at a higher rate than your contract value for the energy that you're being billed at, means that you're getting a bigger savings for the same kilowatt hour production.
Need the pro forma, please, thank you. Just wanna see it in writing.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Who, um, Tom, who's gonna negotiate this with?
Right now, our lawyers are talking to their lawyers.
Who's, I mean, when it gets down to the numbers, who's gonna help you decide? Do you have somebody at the town hall helping you?
When, when we, when we look at, and, uh, this is a very new offer. Um, did, and thi- this is, this is the first proposal from Citizens since we sent a proposed pilot agreement. So we're gonna be going back and forth quite a bit.
Right.
Before we have something.
Well, I guess my suggestion was, I was wondering if Richard would help you.
Oh, that'd be great.
Because when, before, I worked with Richard when we, when we were doing the original Colonial Power thing. And he was a huge help.
Yeah, sure, if you're willing, that, that'd be fantastic.
If I have the time, so.
Okay.
Maybe we could have a discussion.
Yeah.
Can't over, over commit.
Yeah, and.
He's not an employee in the town, so it's tough.
Yeah, if we're gonna do something with Richard, we should pay Richard first time.
Yeah. And consulting.
I have no problem with that.
I mean, yeah, the, uh, our suggestion would be, we look, we had a consultant look at it last time when we did Cal Power.
Yeah.
So maybe we're going back to that, because that's exactly what they did.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but it can be.
I, I, I don't like the, I, I, lawyers and lawyers are talking about red, talking about black and whites, they're not talking about the negotiated numbers and financial impact, that's what we wanna see.
So, yeah, we're, we're right at the beginning of that, so, yeah, maybe, um, some general structural advice.
Is it possible to take a year's worth, well, three years' worth of bills and show us the impact if we were in this agreement based on those bills? Just a hypothetical mock-up.
Certainly, yeah.
For that, that's, that's.
I was showing the first three years.
That's, this is based on our current kilo, uh, the last three years of our.
Yeah.
Of our consumption. So it's based on the average of that.
And the reason I did it, um, in a kilowatt hour versus the electrical, um, dollars per year used is because of the rate fluctuations. So two years ago, the total cost for, um, the annual usage by the town was significantly lower than last year's cost because of the rate. So that's why I think it's prudent, if you will, to contract in the total electric usage in kilowatt hours that the town has used, because that number won't, um, fluctuate nearly as much, it still will fluctuate, but that's why we took an average and then did eighty percent of that. So that, um, where utility rates will rise and fall and the total monetary electric bills annually of the town will vary widely, given our large swings from ten cents from an alternative on bill credit from two years ago to twenty-two cents now, um, will not impact the actual baseline of the contract. Because it's in kilowatt hours.
Okay. I know you're not asking for support, but this will not have my support until I see a full pro forma and financial impact over twenty years. Um, anything else to share with us tonight, Emily?
Um, no, the last thing on my list was to just, um, also encourage the town to, um, go out to bid for the Dalton landfill, for the town's landfill, it's a great little site, um, that could be quite beneficial, um, for some additional, um, production and, um, monetary benefits to the town.
And Emily, do you have any statistics on how many households you have, you have enrolled on average in a town similar size to Dalton?
In our Joe for Sun program?
Yep, in, in this program, but you're targeting five hundred and fifty low income houses in Dalton, I don't even know how many low income houses we have, but on average, similar size. I don't even know how many low income houses we have, but on average, similar sized town, what has, what has been your success rate in enrollment?
Um, typically we, I don't have those numbers offhand, um, but typically we have targeted the town and surrounding areas. Um, and have been able to find, um, a lot of good feedback. And once word of mouth gets out, it's been very, um, beneficial so that your neighbors will hold different town meetings and town halls to talk to people. Um, and so that's how, um, it really depends on what town you're talking about or what town, um. Dalton is probably one of the smallest towns that we've been, that we'll be working in. But I did look, um, on the low income community shared solar program also allows for environmental justice districts. Um, this is getting a little technical, so.
Nope, it's, it's right.
But it does allow for environment, there's a map of the Massachusetts that shows income eligible environmental justice zones.
Yeah, we have.
And much of Main Street along Dalton is included in that zone. And it does forecast that there's, I believe there were eight hundred households that were included in that district. So those would all be eligible for this project.
And how long do we have to convert the, or to enroll those households before the, it goes out of town? On average?
Um, we'd be working with the town, um, uh, also I should note that I don't think I mentioned that. We're looking to provide benefit for a twelve month period to low income households. And then we would look to bring on new people to fill those, um. It, it is basically a year contract, if you will, for the low income, uh, component. So that there's benefit will be spread around because we're not looking to only serve certain low income residences for twenty years. That won't, that's just not a, a good model. We would look to serve for twelve months, um, make sure we're providing benefit and then make sure we're bringing on new, um, new local low income people.
Mr. Boyle?
Yeah, uh.
So that'd be an ongoing campaign is what I should, is where.
Mr. Boyle, Mr. Boyle has a question, Emily.
Oh, this is crazy. Emily, uh, Jenna Boyle here. While we're talking about low income, we're talking this term around the room all night. What exactly is the low income figure? And does that mean the total income of a household by its members?
Good question.
Great question.
Yeah, and the second part of that question is, in this case, or in Berkshire County, uh, what is that figure? The constitute being low income or not?
So that is a state figure, um, to determine, um, low income total household income. I don't know the number offhand. The way that the SMART program requires low income eligibility is through the customer having an R two or an R four rate class with the utility. So what Citizens requires is a copy of their electric bill that shows you as an R two or an R four customer. And that's, that basically means that you, they've already been verified through the state process, um, for their income verification.
Well, yeah, what is it, the eight, what's the, uh, organization that distributes, uh, fuel and stuff like that? A D S?
Mass Save.
One down East Street.
B C A C.
Was it, Mark?
B C A C.
B C A C. B C A C, uh, low income is, uh, with two people living in the house, forty-six thousand. In addition, Massachusetts is in a recent calculation of figures by the state and, uh, demographic figures has been, uh, demo, uh, Dalton has been noted for. Being have, having a lower income average per homeowner than, uh, the rest of the state. So I think there's a, probably a good hope that we could round out five hundred citizens.
I would hope so.
Yeah, well, I, I, I really don't see any problem with that.
Yes, I would like to see, I, I agree with you, John, I don't see a problem, I just want to see some stats on what their enrollment is, yeah.
Emily, can you, um, transmit to this board and town manager what is considered a low income figure so we can start working on this?
So, so Emily, do you want me to try and explain?
Sure.
Yeah, so, so John, if you look at your electricity bill.
Yeah.
For residents, it had, you have, have an R one rate. If you have an R two or an R four rate, which has been set by ever source.
Yeah.
That's what, how ever source in the state gets to that, I'm not quite sure. I know that's the question you're asking.
Yeah, it is.
Um, and that may be an ever source question, but.
Yeah, I can send a link to how you could apply to ever source to become an R two or an R four rate class customer.
Well, that's nice, but it still doesn't tell us what the average home income figure is that we qualify for this particular program. And I understand that you don't have it, I think we should acquire it as soon as we can.
Yeah, it should, it should be good statistics that the town might be able to acquire. Okay.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you, Emily, any other questions?
Yep.
Mark, you all set?
All set.
Okay.
Can I ask one last question? So Emily, on, on the town landfill, because ever source upgraded the lines and you had to do a study with them for the Warren landfill. Do we know how much capacity is left for the town landfill?
Great question. Um, the short answer is no, not until you apply through a pre-application or an application. And they do a system study to look at the circuit to see what capacity is left.
Okay, thank you.
All right, very good conversation, thank you for your time, Emily, appreciate it, Danielle, set?
I'm all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Doyle.
You very much.
Thank you. Um, all right, uh, moving on to number eight on the agenda, status of committees, the senior center building and maintenance committee and the waste management recycling committee, Mr. Hutchinson.
Yes, first one is fairly straightforward. Um, apparently we've been continuing to appoint the senior center building and maintenance committee. Uh, that was actually slated to expire when the building was completed. Uh, so without objection, um, I simply move forward, uh, appointments for that committee, uh, going forward. Probably should have been, um, dropped on and go, I don't think it's met for years.
Tom, I look at that list, at least four of those people on there are dead. So it'd be a good time to disband it.
Yeah.
But we've been approving it every year?
Have we been approving these appointments every year? I don't recall seeing this come through last year.
I, I don't know, this is founded, tagged it, said, let's, let's formally.
Yeah, okay. Let's, uh, I guess, do I have a motion to, I guess, disband this committee, is that what you're asking for?
Dissolve.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move we dissolve the senior center building and maintenance committee effective, uh, June fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion second to dissolve the, uh, senior center building committee. Um, all in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. Now the waste management recycling committee.
Yeah, and this is, uh, what our DPW superintendent is here for. Uh, he's currently the chair of the committee. Um, we will simply note that, uh, there's been a difficulty in obtaining quorum recently, well, I guess since September or so. And that now that we're joining the Berkshire solid waste management, Northern Berkshire solid waste management district. Um, we will have, have access to a lot of professional expertise, um, that we were trying to kind of create at the local level. But, uh, Bud feels that for what we can get from them, um, it is unnecessary to continue, uh, our own waste management committee at this time.
Yeah, um, I've been doing this committee for a year and a half. And probably, Mr. Boyle knows, it's probably been three, four times we've had a forum. We haven't had a full quorum since, I think it was September or last August. You know, we've had meetings mostly every month and it's usually Mr. Boyle and myself.
Terry.
Sometimes Terry gets in, uh, but it, we can never do any decisions or anything. But now that we've joined Northern Berkshire Solid Waste, which starts July first, um, I mean, they're doing the contracts, they're keeping us. In line with everything we need to do for, uh, NAST EP for the transfer station, all, all paperwork we need to do going out to bid for contracts. They're kind of doing everything and, you know, they're still talking to me, um, about things. And obviously I'm still running it the same way it's been, it's just pretty much the committees. There's really not a need for it at the moment and we don't, haven't had any funding coming.
So how do we address the, the initial mission of this committee? If it hasn't been, uh, attendance, then maybe we need to reappoint different people. But the mission, as I'm reading from the, the, um, the document that this board approved. Is to provide recommendations to the health agent to increase the, the quantity and improve the quality of recycling, decrease solid waste and minimize costs for town of re, residents. Um, and then basically, you know, this is around the education enforcement coordinator. Uh, it was around, um, the transfer station, we took it over during COVID. So who's going to take on that aspect? Is Northern, is North, what's it called, Northern?
Northern Berkshire.
Northern Berkshire, are they going, are they going to take on those activities or are they still local?
We'll actually have more, we'll actually have more things through them because we are in, I think it's thirteen towns, I think. I think we're number thirteen in the group. So it all works together for contracts, for recycling, different things. Certain town, like we're the mattress town, like all the towns around in this, in this group come to us to recycle mattresses.
Yeah.
Others have different things, Hinsy others things, Windsor does, some of the other towns do. Um, and it benefits us great to do things that we don't have to have, try to do it all ourselves there, like we used to have to try to do it all ourselves. Which we never had sheds or anything where we could do half of that stuff. And they'll have certain days, um, you know, for hazardous wastes, they organize all that. They organize other recycling events and education pieces, things like that. And then, I mean, like you were reading that, it says, you know, the border health and they haven't had anything to do with it in a year and a half. That was, that went away when Jane left, so that was, that came to my purview.
But that, that, if we go back and look at the mission of this committee, that, the agent should be engaged. That's the purpose of that waste management committee. So if we're not leveraging the committee for its intended purpose, 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 then, um. I'm not, I'm not sure what we're doing. But I'll, I'll step back with the board for questions.
As a member of the committee. Bud pointed out very accurately, there's been a lackluster of attendance. But we've managed to struggle through and beat most of the goals and get the, uh, transfer station in our possession and up and running. Very efficiently creating new, uh, avenues of recycling and, uh, expansion of, physically expanding the premises through Bud and his equipment. And, uh, I think, I know what he's getting at, it's kind of eh, nebulous now. But he had this opportunity to take advantage of this Northern Berkshire solid waste district. We joined it as a renewable benefit to us, the town of Dalton by joining this. And, uh, and they offer, uh, plan to, uh, of, uh, recommendations of how we should go forward and run our transfer station with Bud. And they operate something in a sense of the regional planning commission where they have, they have an office of staff and professional advice. But they have, uh, I think monthly meetings, but, and, you know, somebody has to attend these meetings. And, uh, it's been suggested, or Bud suggested, uh, be him, but he's a very busy man. And we talked about this at the last meeting, we thought him, Bud, Terry, uh, Terry, what's Terry's name? Terry?
Bowman.
Bowman and myself would split it up, well, we'd go one week, or one month, well, we'd go to next month. It's in Adams, so I think it's a good idea.
I, you know, you talked about having a health agent involved, I think if anything comes up, we don't, we don't need to have a committee or commission. Something comes up, we'll really need the health agent, we just call the health agent and we deal with that. I mean, it doesn't sound like there's that involved in it, hasn't been that involved in it in the last year and a half. So, you know, if John's on the committee and he's recommending it and saying, and Bud's recommending, who am I to say?
Well, what, what have we, what, I don't know what the, I don't know what we're going to do locally. So that, so you, you, you go with the commission, who's going to operate what we do locally? Because this, the, the driver of this was what I said was a mission, but also a recycling bylaw, which has not been enforced. And that's supposed to be by the health agent. And the other question is, if members are not showing, the membership was a green Dalton committee member, a health agent, one select board member. One finance committee, educational enforcement coordinator, two town residents. If we're not getting participation, what have we done to recruit new members? Or look at this and make sure that we're focused on what the intended purpose is to. When we look at the town transfer station, all the other activity, to run that as a business, make sure we're reducing it. And by the way, I was in Hingham and found their stickers of thirty dollars. We're at what, one nineteen? Right, so how do we, how is Northern Berkshire going to help us decrease our sticker cost by implementing innovative programs to reduce waste?
Joe, when you go somewhere and I have, would just like you, to find out, is a sticker for twenty dollars or substantially lower than ours? You have to ask the question, is the town contributing, contributing any tax funds to subsidize the sticker rate?
And the answer is no.
The answer is no.
I asked that question, the answer is no.
Well, then it's, it's volume.
It's impossible because we all pay the same cost.
So again, it's the volume.
And they make it up on the per van cost or the unit cost.
Yeah, so, so how does, so my question to you Bud is, does Northern Berkshire drive our innovative programs to therefore reduce the cost for our residents? Because that is one of the goals and objectives of this committee.
It is because the hauling rates, just in general, are half of what we're paying right now, I believe.
So we join Northern Berkshire, we get a fifty percent reduction in hauling fees?
Pretty much, yeah. We just got it, it's six eighty for one trip recycling the Springfield back. They're paying three, three sixty, I think, somewhere in that range.
So that's, that's the value, that's, that's what I, that's what I'd like to, I don't know what you guys want to do, but.
I don't know what I want to do.
So.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of like things, I mean, just, you have thirteen towns going. Instead of Dalton going against Cassell if our contract is going back and forth and they can just say whatever because they know we have their equipment.
Yeah.
They can just hammer us all day.
Yeah.
They have, they have the power of thirteen towns to kind of beat on it a little bit, so it kind of helps them a bit.
Okay.
And to help us, obviously as well, I mean, that's.
And, uh, just a final note about the structure. Um, a lot of town's boards of health do run their transfer stations. Um, right now, the DPW is running this transfer station. Back when the committee was formed, the health agent was particularly interested in recycling and reducing solid waste and, and being involved in those transfer stations.
Because we have new bylaw.
And now, a, and, and enforcing the bylaw. Um, we can certainly look into what resources the district has to assist us in moving our program forward. And I think that would be actually more effective than trying to add it on to the current health agents duties.
So who, who has operational oversight of the, the program? You Bud?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Bud, it didn't just like me.
So we can reduce that budget by half in the hauling rates?
The hauling fees, correct.
Okay.
We should be able, you know, most, I don't have it with me, but yeah, most of them were about half.
The, the tipping fees would probably be the same because they work similar, because they would go into the same places. But again, I, I'll, I'll get on my high horse, uh, compost. If we had a town composting program, that could take out half of the weight.
Yeah, the solid waste.
Of our, of our solid waste. And, um, it is possible to implement, it's not the easiest thing, it's complex because you're dealing with.
But that'll be Northern Berkshire's responsibility.
Organic activity, but they could certainly help us figure out how to do that.
Right, it's, and I still.
And, and that would help with the tipping fee.
It's still a lot under me and it's more of them helping assisting me with it.
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Bishop, you had a question?
No, no.
I would like to, if one makes this motion, or I'll make it, I'd like to make sure we appoint, or Bud is our representative. And Mr. Boyle is the alternate, and Terry Bowman is an alternate.
Can you stick one second, please, Mr. Dr. Earl?
Uh, thank you. As a part of the pain care advocacy that I've been doing, I've been working with Northern Berkshire Solid Waste Management extensively. And gained a little bit of insight into how they operate. and gained a little bit of insight into how they operate. I understand that the only organic waste operation that is within the district currently is one in Williamstown. And that was generated by the pool committee in Williamstown and not by the Northern Berkshire Solid Waste Management District. That has been moving forward slowly, not particularly effectively. If the decision is to disband the solid waste management and recycling committee, I would advocate for the responsibility for getting rid of the organic waste fault of the green committee. Because importantly, the organic waste not only is a waste, but it also is a huge greenhouse gas generator. So I would, I would request that as part of your decision, should you decide to disband the waste management.
Thank you, Dr. Irwin.
That's a good point. I think the green committee could take up some of the slack that might be left by disbanding the committee.
It is a possibility. But before we get involved in the green committee, we should do this and see how it works with Bud being our representative and in charge and the information he can bring back to us, make our facilities better, before we get a third party involved, like the green committee.
I don't think that'll change that relationship. Even if the green committee was advising on any of these things, Bud, I'm just saying. I don't think that'll change Bud's role.
Well, I don't wanna, you know, I'll make a motion, but I don't certainly want to add them in just yet.
Yeah.
I'd like to do this and then bring forward what, what they think they can do. Then maybe add that in there.
Is that a motion, Mark?
I'm gonna make a motion that we disband the waste management recycling committee and we appoint Bud as our representative, with John Boyle as the alternate and Terry Bowman as the alternate also.
I'll second it.
Uh, I would, okay, so the motion is second. With discussion?
Clarified. We're appointing them as representatives to the Northern Berkshire.
Correct.
Solid Waste. Is it a?
Why would the, Terry is also a local business, correct?
Yep.
Part of Bowman. Why would we point her to?
We wouldn't need to appoint him.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't need to do that. I mean.
So I just ask to remove Terry.
All right.
Is that okay, Mr. Schrock? Okay. Any pros, discussion? You're none on the favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, and we can reduce our hauling cost by fifty percent. Now, come back with, come back with those numbers to Tom, but no.
I was, the price of gas going up again. It was down, now it's going back up.
Thanks, Bud.
Thank you, Bud.
Okay, we're gonna skip nine, ten, go to eleven. Sign letter of support in the paint care legislation. And we have a letter in our packet. Actually, we have the letter over here. And this is the, Dr. Irwin presented the patient care legislation last time, and we discussed and approved that we're gonna sign a letter of support and send it to Senator Mark, represents Pignotelli and Father Boubier. We got an H, Health Resolution 823, an act relative to paint recycling, Senate 542, an act establishing safe paint stewardship, and Senate 551, an act relative to paint recycling. You all should have it in your, in your packet. Just do a quick read and then take, entertain a motion.
I think we, we already lent our support, right, with a vote?
Yeah, we just haven't seen the letter.
Got it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the letter as presented relative to the paint stewardship program and our support to be communicated to our representatives at the state level.
For a second?
A second.
Permission to second on any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries? Just to be unsure on that letter. All right. Tom, may I your update? Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes, thank you. Just for your information, I took the liberty of looking for statewide resources that might be able to assist in any way with water and fire district matters. I was surprised to find out that neither the Department of Fire Services nor any other state office has any resources for generally assisting such districts. In related news, the interim chief, Mr. Cashay, was reported last week in the media as saying the delivery of the fire truck would be in about five weeks. As a reminder, the select board authorized one hundred and twenty thousand dollars of ARPA money for the purchase. The sole bid came in at one hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars, which we accepted.
And then they, that same article said that the expense was a hundred K. So do we have nineteen K back in ARPA, or we just kind of waiting for the final bill?
I don't know that that hundred thousand dollar figure is accurate.
Okay. All right, thank you, Tom.
In procurement news, if, if it is accurate, there's another issue. In procurement news, the burden invitation for bids opening will be Tuesday, June twentieth at four P M. And we've also issued an addendum notifying bidders, the state law requiring that buyers submit a farm business plan. We also supplied the state's template. And we have clarified the due date as Tuesday, June ninth, June twentieth, as June nineteenth is now a holiday. For the town hall data wiring project, there is so far at least one interested party. Bids are due Thursday, June eighth. An invitation for bids for the electric vehicle charging stations at the CRA will be issued Wednesday, with a due date of Wednesday, June twenty eighth. The DPW superintendent is looking at the cost to pave Johnson Road, as various letter writers have suggested. In dry periods, there is quite a bit of dust. The DPW does lay down some calcium chloride, but that is opposed by those who walk their horses on the road. The cultural council is asking residents to complete a community survey to help them set funding policies in the next few years. The survey is available on the town website and the news items, and there are paper surveys at town hall, the senior center, the library, and the CRA. The survey closes on June thirtieth. Senator Mark's office plans to have monthly hours in this very building, though usually staffed by his constituent services director, Casey Pease. Mr. Pease was here today. Please see the town website for reminders for future office hours. We've had three interviews for building and ground superintendent and are having another one pending getting people's schedules together. For your information, the current building and grounds assistant has offered to work part-time to keep things going, though the current superintendent's staying on part-time to July first. The interviewers have been the police chief, DPW superintendent, and the council agent director. We offered the position to one candidate last week, but he turned down the position citing low pay. All applicants have come from the private sector. We would not be able to reflect those salaries without another wholesale change in salaries, as we have a number of staff who would make considerably more in the private sector.
Well, can we pause there for a minute?
Couple sentences?
Yep, good.
The position did receive the largest percentage increase of any after the personnel study, and I adjusted the grade further even after that. We may be able to tweak the position description more, but it has to be seen in the context of all positions.
So are those three interviews qualified candidates? And did anybody make a counter offer? Like, what are you looking for? I mean? Do that, oh, I don't know if it's, it can't be timed because we have to put it on the agenda, but I thought when we talked about Pat's resignation when we were in, doing with the other issue, that we agreed that we would review the job description together and identify what we want to do within the building and grounds, because I still read the job description as maintenance.
We can review the job description at any time, yeah. We have had one call back after an initial rejection.
I guess not. Does a job description reflect what we need? I read it. I don't.
I believe so, yes.
So twenty-six fourteen hour for a position that is responsible for facilities management?
Maybe we should put it on as a future agenda item.
Yeah.
I feel like we'll be digging into this.
Yeah, let's put it on next week.
Should we let this interview process go forward, and at least hear the final interview before we?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. I think if this.
Things could work out all right, and we'd be all set. But actually, there's one more to go, right?
Well, if you have three qualified candidates and they all rejected because of low salary, that kind of gives me a trend.
I don't think he said they all rejected. He said one of rejected.
They were all concerned about the salary.
Yep.
One of them is coming back to us, the one we offered the position to initially, fought it over for almost a week and then turned it down.
Turned it down. He didn't.
All right, we'll see what the update is next, yeah.
Yeah. When, you think you're gonna complete this interview process with the one remaining applicant in the next week or two weeks?
It should be within the next week.
So, I may say we have a better way, you may have a successful advocate, or we may want to look to another way to move forward. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the, the position is advertised as being open until.
Yeah, I want to ask the board, has everybody read that job description?
Not the current one, no.
Okay, I would ask the board members to review it before next week. Okay, all right.
Can it be sent to us, or just?
It's all mine. Yeah.
Finally, John Berry, who is our contractor managing the town hall renovation, did a walk-through this afternoon. The gypsum wallboard ceilings are at least ninety percent completed and fifty percent taped. The only remaining spot where gypsum wallboard had to be installed was the front stairs. Expect they will be completed no longer than Wednesday. I checked the third floor, and they primed the two office wall spaces being renovated. A crack in one was in the process of being repaired. This boat finished over to install this afternoon and feathered out to get a new finish. After this work is done, we still have electrical to finish, acoustic tiles to install, and insulation to blow in. But this is the single largest piece of the work, so it's going to have made substantial progress.
What are we on track for, for completion, and then move back into the town hall? Are we still on track with the current lease within the bank building? Because if I understand it correctly, if we don't close that out, then we get charged a few extra weeks or months? I can't recall what.
Yeah, well, for the bank, we're already on our second, we're already on our extension, because we signed that early. For the Kittredge House, which is just the two offices, that comes to June thirtieth. And I did negotiate down. It was originally a six-month extension, but I negotiated that down to a three-month extension. We believe now that we, depending on how things go and other work, we're looking at late August, early September for getting it, being back in the other building.
And that, that's a change from July, correct?
Yeah, so another month, more or less.
So about a month, two months behind, okay.
Well, yeah, if you take the, the date of releases being the date of completion.
Now, take the, when we can have staff fully functional back in the town hall?
Yeah, and we're conservatively September, more optimistically August.
Okay.
I like to be optimistic.
Okay.
But, all right, that's the.
But we're still on budget with all the expense, or are we?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for the board? Is that it, Ms. Hutchinson?
One question, just a second. Have you got any, any requests for proposals for a garden property? Have you got any submissions yet?
No, and I, I wouldn't expect to. What I also have knocked out is any expressions of interest, which would mean that then I would automatically send them any addenda that we came up with.
Or if there's no responders to the R P, maybe we keep it as town land. We review it. So if we have no responses to the R P, there's no interest in the town, in that farmland, maybe reconsider options.
Well, what's the reconsider? Are we gonna make farmers out of us, Joe? That's, you have to be a legitimate farmer.
No, I'm saying we, we can reconsider options.
There are no options.
Can we lease it?
That's an option.
Well.
Anyway, let's not get into that.
Yeah, but, but I don't want, I just want to kind of bring it back. If you have no responders, then it should come back to the board.
I'm guessing that, if people are gonna do this, they're gonna wait till the last minute to submit it.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't expect any, any bid until, they, they may show up at the office. That's, that is.
What's, what's the due date for the bids?
Three hundred.
It's the twenty.
Was it June twentieth?
Garden, June twentieth.
June twentieth, okay.
Tuesday, June twentieth.
Okay. Let's see what happens.
Okay.
It could be a party come on, bud.
Tom, how's that been advertised?
I'm sorry?
How's that been advertised, the garden land?
It's on our website. I sent press releases to the Eagle and Iber, sure. And it's on two statewide, central, the central register and COMBIES are state websites for publicizing invitations for bids and requests for proposals.
Thank you, Tom. Any future agenda items?
Did you want to go over the job description next week, or do you want to do it after? Next week can be busy with the hearing.
Well, let's, let's do this. Let's, let's put it on for next week and see if we have time. Bud asked that the board review the current job descriptions posted online in consideration of the twenty-six fourteen hour. And just be prepared for conversation around that. See if we have a candidate or whatnot. Sound good?
Yeah.
You guys good with it?
Yeah, I'm good with that. It's just real, I mean, something different. Sorry.
Yep.
I'm interrupting you, Joe.
No, good.
We gotta get those sidewalks painted on Main Street. Right, there's, what we gotta call from the state? Get those sidewalks painted.
Sidewalks or crosswalks?
I'm sorry, crosswalks. Don't paint the sidewalks. Maybe it's a crosswalks painting. So, Tom, I don't know if you can call somebody for that for the state, the DOT.
Sure.
And just get them, get them.
Add some pork, because we can't hardly see them.
Yeah, they're late. It's usually not soon.
Okay, any other future agenda items? Items not anticipated forty hours before the meeting? We have one that I'm gonna move it to executive session, which is the, a check fraud issue that we were reviewing, Bud capture. It says no financial, no contract, Tom, but we'll review that. Any remarks to the select board?
Yeah, I do.
Mr. Boyle?
And I treat, I take great exception to what the earlier speaker, Mr. Barton, said. And I would very much like to, but I see it's impossible, that when you're gonna sit with, that I'd be part of the team. Because I really, he threw my name around. I don't even know the guy. I can't, I, forty years ago, I knew Pete Barton Jr. was. I don't know what the hell he was talking about. Another thing, he's talking about the right-of-way, he's talking about non APR land. The ten acres we have, maybe a park someday. And he came in here, wrote a letter, and asked for a right-of-way so he could walk up to his wood line.
Absolutely.
And we gave it to him.
We gave it to him.
What the hell is this? Because, you know, and I don't know what I'm talking about, and I'm going in the wrong direction. If you felt this strongly, why did you walk in there and pay the taxes? They needed to be yours.
Let's do this. Let's just, actually, to your point, John, maybe none of us need to be involved and just have Tom meet with him. Because one of the things that, I don't think we've all discussed it recently, but I think we all received the same letter, under Supreme Judicial Court, in open session, they can say anything they want about any one of us without any debate.
That's true, Joe.
Right? So we can't get into that, although I understand exactly what you're saying.
Could take exception to it.
You could take exception, but you can't, you can't.
I'll stop right there. I'll take the say, I'm going back to say I take exception to what he said.
There you go. Yeah, and happy to put it on an agenda to have open discussion for whatever. So, but, okay. But I hear exactly what you're saying, John.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, yeah, I don't even, and I'd like to go off to you, I didn't really talk to you.
I, I'd like to check with your memory.
Yeah.
Later.
I think you two should maybe connect a bit, I'm fine not being a part of any of those conversations.
Yeah, I can leave it up to you, Tom, and, yeah, John, I can give you the history and.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you need any help, we're certainly you can do.
Thank you.
All right, um, any other remarks to the select board? Okay, with that, I'd like to, um, move that we move to executive session, uh, for the purposes of, of contract strategy session, preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, which is town managers evaluation, and the consideration of intention to extend town manager's contract as per his contract, and then also to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or consider filing a criminal complaint, as we got on check fraud issue.
Not by the same person.
Not by the same person.
Two separate issues.
Two separate issues, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, two separate issues, not, not Mr. Hudson in that matter.
Nope.
And then we'll come back to, uh, we'll come back to open session to close, so.
Do you need any announcements?
I'm sorry, I need, I need a motion to accept that.
Uh, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And then we need a roll call vote.
Do we need to read the announcement?
We'll do it when we come back.
We'll do it when we come back, yeah.
Is the reason why we're coming back?
Yeah, to report out what, uh, the contract is.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we are closed, we are, um, moving to executive session, we'll be back. Okay. Mr. Escud.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we release the evaluation, town manager evaluation summary, uh, as part of the public record.
Three seconds, motion is second, any discussion? Here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. And the next is, uh, regarding the town manager's, um, contract.
So this one, um, okay, just give me a second. Uh, maybe need a little help here.
All right.
Because, I don't want to read all this, but, um, let me think, um.
Any summary, Mr.?
Well, some of it doesn't have to necessarily be a motion.
Okay.
If, if the motion, if the, if you want to just.
Let me just talk for a second.
Agree not to extend, you don't actually have to do anything at this point.
Yeah, I think ultimately, um, we're not exercising the right to give notice.
Yeah.
Uh, we're not, we're not giving you notice, I, I think essentially is what it is, um, which means your contract auto renews, um, so you just gotta, I don't know if that needs to be in a motion or not, um.
I think we should note.
For, for one year.
Correct.
That, that's, that's.
It auto renews for one year, so we're really, I think at the end of the day, we're just following the existing contract language, we're not giving you notice.
Well, let me summarize, because I think we need to, we need to summarize for the public, is that, um, the board met about the evaluation, we reviewed the evaluation, had conversations with town manager, conversations together as a board, and what we've decided to do, in the current contract, it states that there's automatic renewal if we didn't take action by May fourth, so that automatically renews a year. We're going to do another evaluation by the end of the calendar year, which will then inform us, turn it into twenty-four, calendar year twenty-twenty-four, of the outcome of that evaluation, to then inform us if we just not renew in May of twenty-twenty-four, or informs us to go into a multi-year contract negotiation at that time. Do I have that correct, Tom?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
How's your job?
So there's no real motion of a contract issue because it's automatically renewing, but that's just a general update for the public and the community.
That's good.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Mr. Richardson, is that fair?
That's why I got caught up, I wasn't sure it was really a motion.
As you were talking, I'm, it's not, it really isn't. Okay, was that a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
So, that's great. Um, roll call vote?
No.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? And everybody send Brittany some flowers for hanging out when I was late tonight, so. Thank you, good night, Dalton.